I'd like to call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Present.
Strife OJ.
Here.
Arcan here. Beloit.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here. Thank you. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is the various items that come before us monthly, such as invoices and field trips. But also, we are extremely grateful, as always, for the donations from our community to our schools and staff. We appreciate your generosity. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Strife OJ. Any discussion or questions? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. We have a consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were three requests submitted to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes. The clerk will time and then hold up the orange card when there is one minute left, the yellow card when there is 30 seconds left, and the red card when time is up, at which point I will also hit the gavel and the speaker must stop speaking. All right, we are going to move on to our first informational item, C1, Student Recognition. Dr. Kazmicek.
Right. Tonight, we celebrate students who have represented the district in various activities. Members of the boys and girls track and field teams and the boys and girls golf teams competed at the state level. Additionally, we had members of the archery team who participated at the national level. Congratulations, students, and thank you to the staff and family members
Great, thank you. Congratulations to all of our students. Next informational item, C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek.
Right. Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Congratulations to this year's graduates from the Transition Education Center, Area Learning Center, and White Bear Lake Area High School. Ceremonies honor these students while other schools and programs throughout the district celebrated the end of a successful school year. Well done, students. Thank you to our retirees who represent more than 800 years of service to the district. Later this week, we will honor our retirees in person with a Luncheon on the Lawn event. All retirees receive Bear awards and certificates to commemorate their time in the district. Thank you for all of your service to White Bear Lake area schools and to the community. District representatives will be back this summer at Market Fest, which runs Thursdays, June 13 through the 25th in downtown White Bear Lake. Stop by the district's booth for pencils, bear paw tattoos, and conversation. New this year is an Orange Out on June 27th when the district sponsors the event and hosts a White Bear Lake area school spirit night. We will fill Fourth Street with district booths, activities, and even pop-up employment fair opportunities. Please bring your friends and family, wear orange, and join us at 6:30 for the scheduled Orange Out photo. And finally, free summer meals are available for kids and teens age 17 and under. There is no enrollment and no cost. The healthy meals are based on USDA nutrition guidelines. Additional information is available on the district's website.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Kazmicek? All right. Thank you. And we'll move into our first discussion item, D1, Overview of Fiscal Year 2024-25 Preliminary Budget. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. Get this fired up. Tonight, we're presenting the 24-25 preliminary budget. Each year, when we, really, any time we present to the school board on the budget, we review the budget cycle. And recall that going back to July, October, we begin the audit for the previous year. So it's June now, and in just a few weeks, we'll be starting to prepare the audit for end of fiscal year '24. Throughout the fall and into the winter, there are several touchpoints on the budget. And then in January, February, when we, after presenting the audit results, then we present a revised budget for the current school year. That budget informs our projected budget, and that's the budget we use for planning the following year. It helps us prepare a preliminary budget. And we enter the next school year with a preliminary budget. We presented that to you at the last work session, and tonight, we'll review it again and ask for board approval as an action item tonight. You've seen this chart before, this graph, and it shows the inflationary effect on public education. And you can follow the blue line and see where the student formula would be if it had kept pace with the rate of inflation since 2003. And then you can follow the orange line and see what actual school funding has been. And the number 11,206,000 is the amount, is the ground that we've lost to inflation over the past 22 years, I guess it would be. And it's had significant impact on public education. We certainly feel it here in the White Bear Lake area schools. So where do our funds come from? And you can see the largest share is state resources. If you look at the blue section, state resources at 53%, special education at 18%. Look at 71% of school resources coming from the state. Federal is just a very small percentage, 2%, and that's been a number that's been losing ground over the last decade, in several decades, in school funding. Property taxes, 20%, and that would include our capital projects levy, operating levy. Long-term facilities maintenance is in there at 5%, and then just nominal amounts, investment earnings and other resources. How our funds are spent, again, we are a very heavy human resources industry, education, and so it makes sense that salaries and benefits would be the lion's share of our expenditures at 70, well, 58 and 21% employee benefits. So that's 79% of our expenditures are in that area of our people. Purchase services, which would be special ed tuition at intermediate districts, transportation, supplies and materials, capital expenditures, round out how our funds are spent. On this graph, we break it down more specifically, and we can see, really can divide this into three categories. The first being instruction, that being elementary and secondary education at 38%. Vocational education, those would be teachers with career and tech endorsements, make up 1%, and then special education, instruction 22%. Instructional support is 8%. That would include curriculum and instruction, staff, instructional coaches, professional development, assistant principals would be in that instructional support. Pupil support services is 5% here, and that's social workers, counselors, health staff, achievement integration staff. We look at operations next, transportation, sites and buildings, and LTFM combined make up 18% of our expenditures. And then administration, district support services, that's our staff in finance, HR, legal, administration, building principals, school board, assistant superintendent, superintendent, round that out, administration being 6% of our budget. So that's where revenue comes from, and that's how we spend it. At this point, our Director of Finance, Andy Johnson, will walk us through the next portion here.
Good evening. This evening, I will be focusing on the preliminary 24-25 budget, that shaded column. So as Tim had just gone through, the details of the revenue and expense budget, in total, for next school year, we're projecting $142,343,000 of revenues. And then in total, $141,524,000 of expenses. So we're looking at more revenue than expense for next year of about $818,000. That excess of revenue over expense then folds down into our fund balances, which are like our savings accounts. The bulk of our operations flows through that blue line, the ending fund balance unassigned. That next school year, we're projecting a total of $11,075,000 in that fund balance. And the school board policy is that we maintain an 8% fund balance. So you can see that we're hitting that 8% fund balance goal for next school year at 8.2%. We also show the projections for the '25-'26 school year. Those will be firmed up, as we know, our actual enrollment next year. It's also a budget year at the legislature, so as we know what our funding will look like for that year, those numbers will be firmed up. But right now, that projects to a total of 8% fund balance as well for the '25-'26 school year. We also present three other funds for approval, our Nutrition Services Fund, Community Services Fund, and Debt Services Fund. So the Nutrition Services Fund, you can see, has about $6.5 million of revenue for next year and then $6.9 million of expenses. So they're projecting a deficit. That's a planned deficit for next school year. You can see that that fund balance is sufficient for their operations, and so they're able to do some one-time expenses related to kitchen improvements and replacements. The Community Services Fund is projecting $8.4 million of revenue and $8.2 million of expenses, so coming out ahead by about $234,000. As you can imagine, the Community Services Fund struggled with COVID when a lot of their revenue was driven by enrollment and participation fees, and so they're working their way out of a deficit. We're proud of a plan that we have in place. We're confident we're going to get that out of a deficit in the upcoming school year. And then the Debt Services Fund is projecting $30.6 million of revenue and $31.2 million of expense. The Debt Services Fund is what we use, it's like, it's what covers our bond payments, which we think of as like our mortgage payments. So this is revenue that's set by the state of Minnesota. We present our debt payments to them, and then they automatically calculate our revenue accordingly. Each year, we levy 105% of our total payments, and then as we grow, that extra 5% grows. And then when we get to a certain threshold, the Department of Ed backs off our total revenue, so that fund balance doesn't get too high. So that's why you see a deficit for next year. It's just because the fund balance is sufficient to cover those upcoming bond payments. So summary of our operating funds. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson or Mr. Wald?
I have one.
Oh, Dr. Kazmicek.
Has anything changed from the work session?
No.
Yeah. So these are the same figures that were presented there and gone over in depth? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Other questions? Ms. Daniels?
I just want to compliment the Finance Department and all the people that are spending the money and watching the budgets and everything, because I know many districts, because there isn't any COVID funding anymore, have really kind of fallen into some very big deficit funding for, you know, upcoming years. And that isn't the case for our districts. So I think we've been well managed, and I just want to point that out, that that's a really great thing. And thank you for that, all the people that participated, which means the entire district. And then I just wanted to also say on that slide, Tim, that you showed where there was some, the inflationary difference between the General Ed Formula allowance, that 11 million difference is just for our district, right? It's not, and that's just as one district. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out. That isn't statewide, that's just us. And so with all the districts, if the general fund was to keep up with inflation, we would have, you know, that's a big, big, big number statewide.
Yeah, that $11.2 million delta is really equal to our fund balance, right? And that fund balance is pretty important for school districts to maintain, because you need it to weather the storm. But we also get our revenue from the state and from the county at different times of the year, and it doesn't always match when our expenses are. And so we need to keep cash flow in that fund balance as part of maintaining cash flow as well. But yeah, that's equal to our fund balance.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move into our next discussion, item D2, which is the first reading of school board policies. The way that this works is that the school board will see the first round of policies one month and discuss, and then they will come back to us the following month for approval. So the first reading for tonight is 417, 506, 507, 512, 514, 527, 534, 606, 704, and 714. Board members, if you have any comments, please note the policy that you're referring to and the page that it's on, so we can follow along. Any comments or questions about the policies? Right. Seeing none, I'll just say thank you again to our Policy Committee for all the work that they do in combing through all these policies every month. We'll move into our operational items. The first operational item, E1, is action on the fiscal year 2024-25 preliminary budget that we just heard about. Mr. Wald.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek, you just heard a presentation on the preliminary budget for '24-25 school year, and the recommendation is for the board to accept it as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any further questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wald. And move into operational item E2, action on workers' compensation agreement for '24-25. Mr. Wald.
Thank you. Each year in June, we bring the workers' compensation proposal and rates for the following year to the school board for approval. This year, we worked with our insurance broker, Gallagher, again, for our workers' compensation package, and we're seeing an increase. The rate increase is 14%. Premium increase is a total of 18%. And so one thing you might notice on this is the mod rate, the experience mod rate increased from 8.82 to 1.23. There's a couple of reasons. First, the experience mod rate is a number that insurance companies use to calculate what organizations' claims experience is in relation to their payroll and in relation to other organizations within the same industry. And so we've been, the last three years have been below 1.0. 1.0 would make, would mean you're at the industry average. And we jumped to 1.23 this year. And there's a couple of reasons for it. One is we had, they use a three-year average of your claims. We had outlier year falloff on that three-year calculation, an outlier low year, which was 2019-20, and then we had an outlier high year roll in. So that '22-23 was an unusually high year. We had one very large claim that year. And that will be with us now for two more years after this. So that's one reason. The other one is that the organization that calculates mods within each industry across the state used a different calculation this year. And I probably couldn't explain it very well, but it uses considerations of your claims experience as well as payroll and weights those differently. The weighting of that changed this year. And so the claim weighting went up, and we're experiencing that because we have that outlier year that we have on the books for this year. So we are seeing a jump. One thing I will say is if you look through our history of premiums over the last 12 years, you see that, or last 10 years, you see that we've actually have been, have done really well with our workers' compensation. We've been with RAS since 2014. They've been, they like us a lot. They've worked very hard to keep our business. And so although we are seeing an increase this year, we feel, our broker tells us he's very happy with what the bid came in at this year. So the recommendation is that the board approve the workers' compensation rate or premium of $511,590 for the '24-25 school year.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcan and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. Operational item E3, action on property and liability insurance for 2024-25. Mr. Wald.
Thank you. Again, the insurance industry's been tough on us the last couple of years, as it has been for everyone. If you again look through, right on here, look through our last dozen years of rates, you can see that we've done really pretty well the last four or five years. As you've seen, natural catastrophes across the country, impact rates everywhere across the country. You can see that we've had that same experience. We've had some other things. Cyber went up several years ago in public schools, as schools have been experiencing cyber attacks. And so we felt that go up. Our valuation, as we've made some facilities improvements, went up last year. We were told to expect about a 15% increase this year, and we're at 12.4%, which doesn't feel great, but better than 15%, I guess. So the recommendation is for the board to approve the premium for property and casualty of $752,114.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcan and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Strife OJ. Any questions or discussion?
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wald. Move into the next operational item, E4, action on tentative contracts 2023-25 fiscal years with non-affiliated and administrative employees. Mr. Mons.
Good evening. This is really just a statement for the next two agenda items, but I'd like to just start out by saying a very big thank you to the staff in both the Human Resources Office and in the Finance Department for trying to move swiftly at the end of our fiscal year here. And especially to Cindy Gustafson, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, who put in a ton of time and effort with all of our groups, but especially with these employees, to make sure that we had conducted market studies and that we were able to move through that process in the same way that we are with all of our collectively bargained groups. And so first up here is our non-affiliated administrative employees. And it's, I recommend that you approve these, but I'd just like, again, to just speak to, the process we use is very similar to the process we use for all of our collectively bargained groups. In fact, we meet with all of our small, medium, and large-sized groups that are in this category as well. And so we try to make sure that nobody's falling behind due to that lack of affiliation.
So the recommended action is to approve the proposed salaries and benefit contributions for non-affiliated and administrative employees for '23-25. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And then operational item E5, action on tentative contract with 2023-25 fiscal year with the White Bear Lake Schools cabinet members. Mr. Mons.
And we use the same process in working with our cabinet members and the rest of our administrative staff. And I recommend and seeking board approval.
You've heard the recommended action for the cabinet members for the fiscal years '23-25. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Arcan and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Arcan, aye. Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Mons.
Thank you.
Operational item E6, action on school district population adjustment. Mr. Mar.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board. State funding for community ed for districts across the state of Minnesota are provided based off total district population. As we get updated numbers from the census, we have the ability to approve the population increase that will directly impact additional revenue that will come into our apartment based off those numbers. The recent census population shows that our population in White Bear Lake has increased from 65,587 to 66,764. And I'm here tonight just to ask it for you guys to approve the updated population from, provided by the Minnesota State Demographer, and accept that increase.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strife OJ and a second. Dr. Newmaster, any questions or discussion? Dr. Newmaster.
I have one question. Do they break it down? We have more people in our district, but are many of them of age to be students? Do they break it out like that, or is it just total?
It's just a total number. Yep, total number on the report that I received for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then just one question from me, Mr. Mar. So this district population, so this includes all of the communities that fall within the White Bear District, right?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Operational item E7, action on resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the office of school board member will be from July 30, 2024, to August 13, 2024. The resolution in your packet has been provided by our elections attorney, Peter Martin of Kennedy and Graven. This will formally establish the filing dates for the 2024 school board election. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the 2024 school board election.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcan and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. And our final operational item, E8, action on school board policies. These came before us last month and are here before us for approval. The school board policies are 517, 518, 519, and 705. Usually, we approve these in one fell swoop, so if I could please get a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Strife OJ. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you. And we'll move into the last item on our agenda, which is Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to talk about what's going on in the district, things that they are connecting with in their roles as board members. Does anyone have anything to share for Board Forum? Ms. Daniels?
Couple of comments. Just want to congratulate all the retirees from the district, the parent educators, custodians, teachers, administrators, our school staff, all the people that are retiring, and thank you very much for your service. And the other thing, I was lucky enough to go to four different graduation ceremonies this spring, and they were all just brilliant. And I want to just congratulate all of our graduates, and we have graduated in our audience today, so that's nice, in-person graduates, so that's great. And congratulations to him and all the students that graduated this spring. spring. Very impressive group of students in every way. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I might say ditto. I think of all the people that are retiring and the people that I've worked with throughout the decades, and it represents a whole lot of energy and love and dedication, whatever the position, and joy and sadness. So I think of all those times, and I wish everybody a good retirement. And I also had an experience at a school on Sunday where we saw sunrise now turning into Mariner already started. We went there to have a recital, and as usual, we're welcomed within a great facility, but they're already working on improving the facility. So it was like, there is not a moment spared between the beginning of summer and the beginning of construction. So I'm impressed with all the people that have planned this humongous effort. The wave is continuing, and Mariner is back almost.
Sorry.
Good summer to everybody.
Dr. Arcan?
I just want to say, it's always been Mariner in my heart since I graduated. I do have something, though, for members of White Bear Lake Schools. On Friday, Ramsey County Legal Local Government will be having a legislative session, discussion, and wrap-up. So many things happen, especially in the very last days, and things are pushed through, it's hard to keep track. So Friday morning from seven, or eight to nine, we'll be having people come in to talk about kind of the changes, what was, you know, what was actually approved, what's being pushed through, and how does it affect members of school districts and of local governments? And so if you're interested, let me know, I can let you know, give you, get you the links, or show you how to register. Otherwise, I just want to say, let's have a safe and fun summer, and then just remember, either read a book to your children or have them read a book. Because I'm just going to say once again, as a parent, some of my fondest memories of my children when they were younger, and reading books to them all the time, and so it's good for them and it's good for your heart. Thank you.
Ms. Beloit?
So I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to go to a couple of different graduation parties this weekend, and I had people come up to me who had taken something through community education, had been exposed to the new facilities, and I was getting rave reviews for the fields, for all of it. Everything that everyone's experienced has been, they've been really, really excited about it, so lots of good feedback.
I want to echo what all of my colleagues have said and wish everyone a happy and safe summer. Congratulations to the graduates, and also to the parents of the graduates. I see you over there, Rachel. Congratulations, that is a long haul to get your students where they are, so many congratulations. And I also just want to say a huge thank you to my fellow board members. I appreciate all of you and the thoughtfulness with which you do this task, and I appreciate that you are always thinking about the equity for four-way decision-making protocol in the work that you do. So thank you for your service and the integrity with which you do this job, because it's a lot. So thank you, and I hope that you all have an excellent summer as well, and I will, we will see you on the other side in fiscal year '25, if you can believe it. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand, and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.